All right, I'd like to call the city council meeting of October 5th, 2023 to order. Roll call, please.
Alderman Ames, here. Alderman Catalano.
Here.
Alderman Currielli.
Here.
Alderman Jacob. Alderman Messina.
Here.
Alderman Sisnarsky.
Here.
Alderman Hartwoods.
Here.
Alderman Hardy Woods.
Here.
Alderman Jacob.
No, he's out. He's.
Mayor, please.
Here. Clara Coram, please stand and join the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I need a motion to approve the minutes of September 7th, 2023.
The move.
Second.
Any questions, comments, or corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post? That passes. Do any citizens wish to be heard on matters not listed on the agenda? Okay, I have no written communiquees. Under mayor's report, two quick items. This weekend, Saturday, October 7th, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the Public Works Building, 720 North Central, we will be having the Green Fair, the free document shredding, free electronics recycling, disposal of following items: American flags, printer cartridges, prescription drugs, household batteries, cell phones, eyeglasses, holiday lights, and hearing aids. That's this Saturday. Second item. It is regarding the liquor license. If there's no objections, we'll put that to the next committee meeting, but it might not be next week. Might be in three weeks. Chief has to get some, a few things that have to be taken care of. Unless anybody has real objections and tell the chief not to do it.
Just have a.
Go ahead, Alderman Woods.
Is that in keeping with our whole full restaurant bar seating? I don't remember the place I mean, I know that.
Mr. Brown?
Yes, and I'll, I'll be, I'm working with Mara to provide for the, the classification of license that they're, we need based on the nature of their operation.
Yeah, there's a couple of things that need to be checked out. So the chief was just telling me, probably won't be ready next week, so it'll be on the one half there. Okay. That takes care of that. Brad, anything, or chief, anything for Mr. Murmas, since he's out? Okay. Consent agenda, we have seven items on the consent agenda. On the consent agenda. If no objections, Alderman Woods?
I'd like to remove number five.
Number five? Okay. Anything else? All right, then, any motion?
Need a motion.
For the other six. Roll call, please.
Alderman Sisnarsky?
Yes.
Alderman Alderman Ames?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Currielli?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Hartwoods?
Yes.
Alderman Hardy Woods?
Yes.
Okay, and that passes. Now we need to approve the items. Item number one, ordinance amending Chapter 12 of the City of Wooddale Municipal Code Regulations Inspections of Unauthorized Construction and Post-Construction Variations. Item number two, an ordinance amending the master fee schedule for building inspections, construction, and post-construction variations. Item number three, a resolution approving a proposal from Superior Road Striping Incorporated for the fiscal year 2024 pavement marking program in amount not to exceed $26,305. Item number four, a resolution approving a proposal from Performance Pipelining Incorporated for the Addison Road sanitary sewer cleaning, televising, and locating services in amount not to exceed $33,160. Skipping number five. Item number six, a resolution approving a letter of intent and approval to proceed with investment grade, no, sorry, resolution approving a professional services agreement between the City of Wooddale HR Green for Tower One Phase One Engineering in amount not to exceed $45,975. Item number seven is a resolution approving a proposal from Baxter and Woodman for Middle Drive Phase One Engineering not, not to exceed amount of $28,700. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Okay, we have motion, a second, roll call.
Alderman Ames?
Yes.
Alderman Sisnarsky?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Currielli?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sisnarsky? Hartwoods?
Yes.
Alderman Hardy Woods?
Yes.
And that passes. Next, committee chairman reports planning, zoning, and building. Alderman Catalano, but this one is going to be, we're going to recess first, correct?
Correct.
We'll just postpone this for right now. Which is going to be after executive session.
Okay.
All right. Item B, public health and safety judiciary, Alderman Currielli.
I have no report, mayor.
That's why. Item C, Alderman Jacob had to step out. Let's see, who was, is that Alderman Hardy Woods?
Yes.
Yes, it is.
All right. All right, so.
Public Works, go ahead.
Public Works made, so approval of final payment to Ciosk Tree Service for fiscal year 2324 tree trimming program in the amount of $70,479.66. That is my motion.
Second.
Motion, second, questions on this one?
Alderman Hardy Woods?
Yes.
And I'm sorry, I missed who seconded.
Alderman Catalano.
Catalano. Alderman Catalano?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Alderman Currielli?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob, Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sisnarsky?
Yes.
Alderman Hartwoods?
Yes.
Missing one.
Alderman Ames?
Oh, I'm sorry, I got me called. I apologize.
Yes.
Alderman, Alderman Ames, yes.
And that passes.
Number two, approval of pay request. Number two, final to RW Dudman Cove for the fiscal year 2023 pavement patching and crack sealing program in the amount of $118,000 and, $118,660.27. That is my motion.
Second.
Okay, we have motion, and we have a second. Any questions on this one? Alderman Catalano?
Yeah, so, I was probably going to go to Director Lane, so, do we have a final punch list on that as far as the?
Mr. Lane?
Our Parkway grass, is that, is that part of that?
Go ahead, Mr. Lane.
Thank you, mayor. So that is part of the Capital Road Program. This is the smaller road patching program. There is an outgoing punch list for the Capital Road Program, which includes the landscaping restoration.
That's in the list of bills, right, correct?
Uh, there is, I believe, a payment in the list of bills, but it's not the final payment for the road program. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Roll call.
Alderman Hardy Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Ames?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Currielli?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sisnarsky?
Yes.
Alderman Hartwoods?
Yes.
And that passes.
Item three, approval of final payment to McDonough Demolition for the demolition of 333 through 339 East Irving Park Road in the amount of $60,850. That is my motion.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any questions on this one? Roll call.
Alderman Hardy Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Sisnarsky?
Yes.
Alderman Ames?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Currielli?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Hartwoods?
Yes.
And that passes.
Item four, approval of final payment to Upright Interiors for business for the Public Works Furnishing Project in the amount of $1,250. That is my motion.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any questions on this one? Roll call.
Alderman Hardy Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Ames?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Currielli?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sisnarsky?
Yes.
Alderman Hartwoods?
Yes.
And that passes.
Item five, a resolution approving an agreement with KSK Landscaping and Handyman Co. for the 2023 snow removal, snow removal assistance program in an amount not to exceed $30,000. That is my motion.
Second.
We have motion, a second, questions? Alderman Ames?
Director Lane, when will this go out to the, the community for people to sign up? Or has it already?
Go ahead, Mr. Lane.
Uh, it has not been advertised yet, but now that it's formally approved by council, the applications will be available, and we'll start advertising through our various channels, social media, newsletter, the clock tower, et cetera.
Follow up, go ahead.
So what will the resident, I know there was three different types of, um, snow removal proposed and bid on, so what will the cost be for the resident? Is it half of that, or?
Correct, the resident will pay half, and then the city will pay the other half.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Roll call.
Alderman Hardy Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Ames?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Currielli?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sisnarsky?
Yes.
Alderman Hartwoods?
No.
And that passes.
Item six, a resolution approving a professional services agreement between the City of Wood?
Nope. That's not yours. Finance administration. Sorry.
Kind of like your dad.
Finance administration, resolution, the intent regarding city expenditures?
Finance administration.
Yeah.
Oh, we got moved, okay.
Sorry.
Oh, because I think they.
Yeah, there's a little.
No worries.
No, the agenda, there was a little in the first page also. No problem. No, no. There's.
That concludes my report.
Thank you. Finance administration.
I have one.
Alderman Ames, go ahead.
One report, mayor. A resolution expressing official intent regarding certain expenditures to be reimbursed from the special tax allocation fund for and/or from proceeds of an obligation issued, if any, in connection with a proposed tax increment financing. That is my motion.
Do a second.
Second.
Questions? Roll call.
Alderman Ames?
Yes.
Alderman Currielli?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sisnarsky?
Yes.
Alderman Hartwoods?
Uh, no.
Alderman Hardy Woods?
Yes.
And that concludes my report.
And that passes. Okay, uh, under other business, let's start with number five. Let's go back to number five on the consent agenda. Resolution authorizing a letter of intent and approval to proceed with investment grade audit from Veragee for the advanced metering infrastructure and leak detection project. Do I have a motion?
Need a motion?
Okay, questions? I have one question. I know, I know you answered it already, Brad. But, so, I know we haven't seen the numbers on how they talked. We were making so much money, really we're not, because they were figuring 4% increase every year, which was nonsense. But I know I talked to you, and I asked you, well, what if we don't switch all the meters all in one year, and we phase them in over, I don't know, whatever, three, five, seven years? And you said, we still have to do this part, if I recall correctly. Because if you change everything all at once, that means in 20 years, they got to redo everything at once, it can never phase in. That's, that was some of the questions I had, but I know the way you explained it to me, we will have those discussions, or is this, they're just going to come forward with the? Mr. Wilson?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Please. I double, sure, yeah, so we have to do industrial grade audit, which effectively is the engineering of, we have to test the meters, see where their accuracy is, go through the software administration, things of that nature. And at that point, they'll come back, and if we want to be phasing, then we can be phasing. So what's really the biggest component is to know where the meters are at. You know, because if the meters come back and they're all 98, 99%, well, then maybe we don't need to do the meters, or we can take a longer, do a longer runway. If they're coming back and they're at 85%, okay, well, then there's our issue. So, we have to do this preliminary engineering, as you will, study to get all the data, and then come back, and we can determine at that point how we want to phase it. I know one of the questions you had was maybe we do the leak detection for a year, and see what that does, and then we can phase from there yourself. That's certainly something we can do. Also, if we did all the meters at once, there's nothing precluding us from in year 15 to start turning them over again to avoid that bubble in year 20. So we do a few different approaches once we get through this initial river's data question.
Right, but I know when we spoke, number one, if we have 20 years guaranteed, why do I want to start at 15? Right? But the other thing is, we've been putting in new meters over the last five years, so some of those meters could be the last ones to be replaced. Just like we did the SURF program for the vehicles, we were talking about the treatment plant and the filters a little while ago, so it's not all at once. I mean, you're basically going to strap the next council in 20 years with one big bill. I don't, and maybe it's not a good approach, and somebody will tell me, explain to me why that isn't, to phase all the, all these meters. I just, I know when I'm, when I see the numbers without the 4% increases, we're only doing, we're only going to be doing this because we're modernizing our equipment. That's what I, that's what I think I'm going to see when I see those models, but that's just me. Any other questions, otherwise? Alderman Woods?
Yeah, I mean, I'm of a very similar opinion. We're getting on the treadmill on a 20-minute, 20-year cycle to replace equipment and technology. Water meters essentially can last for 40, 50 years. Now, certainly there are breakdowns in that group. But as far as them also degrading, I mean, those things could be calculated too, what the degrade factor is, and that could be backloaded into the pricing model. So do we really need to go through this exercise to, to answer questions? We could probably answer ourselves. Am I, I'm backing up to that. Do we, and I didn't ask before, but do we know that if we're getting billed from DuPage County for 1 million gallons, that we actually receive 1 million gallons, or could that be 850,000 gallons?
Mr. Lane? Funny you bring that up, because of a discussion just before the meeting tonight. Go ahead.
Thank you, mayor. Yeah, so DuPage Water Commission tests all of their meters. We have four meters from them annually, and they're allowed to be within a 2% range of 100%. So they, if they register between 98 and 102%, they're, they're considered accurate.
Follow up? Go ahead.
Well, and again, how old does that need to?
They replace them every year when they test them.
Oh, they replace them every year, okay. All right.
Any other questions? I mean, so this is basically for them to do the leak detection, all that, if we got leaks in our system and all that stuff, which may help. No, the, if I remember right, this stuff where they put the things, the meters or whatever, if we have a leak in the pipe within a few feet, right, there's, that was the whole, go ahead, somebody answer, Mr. Wilson?
Yeah, part of the scope of the LOI included the leak detection program.
This?
That was a part of it.
Yeah.
Is that part of the test?
Go ahead, Alderman Woods.
Part of the final program.
Mr. Wilson?
Presented as final, the parts, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Presented as part of the final program, but it wasn't presented as this is part of figuring out where the water losses are. The water losses, going in, picking houses to change out water meters and see, or add meters to balance the meter they put on versus the one that's there, right? Is that?
Who's going to answer that? Mr. Wilson?
So, there's really going to be, I guess, four different, at least four different parts to what they're going to be doing. There's the metering software, there's the meter accuracy study, which is, that's where they mentioned pulling 68 or 75 meters and having it bench tested for placement meters. So that gives you kind of where the loss of the water meter is. Then on top of that, then there's the smart meter interface, if you will. And Alderman Jacob had mentioned aqua hawks and that's involved. So there's a few different providers of that service. And then the fourth component is the inline leak detection, where they put the echo devices on the bottoms of the fire items, and then each of the devices. So there's at least those four different components that would be in this study that they're going to do under its own.
Go ahead, Alderman Woods.
Just follow up. And so, the, going back to the original statement, so we have a 17%, perceived 17% loss of that perceived 17% loss, 8% is on the meter side, right? That the meters are inaccurate. The rest is leaks in our, our system, fires, what other main issues?
Water main break. Go ahead, Mr. Wilson.
Yeah, so, to be fair, their estimate was 8% on the meters. And that's what will hopefully come out when we do full testing. So it could be more than that, it could be less than that. So obviously, if it's, say the meter's committed 95%, then we know if there's 12% somewhere else, which would indicate that theoretically would have a greater impact on the inline detection. Or if we just commit it, you know, making up numbers to 88%, then there's really only roughly 5% that would be the inline pipeline issue or whatever. So I think the, kind of the good news, bad news is the answer to the metering question isn't going to thrive the rest of the path for the online leak detection. You can get allowances on, should I kind of have that one? On the LOI two from the rates we've got to lower to those. We also do our pipe flushing valve exercises. So there's some things that we have to estimate flow rates on when we do that, and we do get a little bit of allowance from the state on the LOI two report to the ICAO for those. Again, that 17% perceived loss accounts for the meters, the inline leaks, and then there's the water main break side flushing. It's something that's something, as we kind of go down into each of those, it'll start theoretically, the answer is a little light on some of the issues on this one.
Go ahead, Mr. Lane.
Yeah, just to clarify, on that 17% water loss that we're experiencing, so that encompasses all of the water that's lost, it's called non-revenue water, so water that's billed to organizations and not billed, or lost through metering inaccuracies, or lost through real losses like water main breaks and leaks and things like that. So of that 17%, we're reporting that about 87% of that 17%, whatever that is, is from real losses, from water main breaks. Those would be inline issues with our distribution system, and then the remaining 13% of that 17% would be from metering inaccuracies and unbilled consumption. So hopefully that makes it clear as mud.
Clear as mud? Alderman Messina, you had your hand up?
At the end of the day, the objective here is to get us true numbers. Everyone keeps honing in on that spreadsheet, I wish they wouldn't have showed it, right? They're playing with numbers, right, when they showed us that? So the idea is to, this is going to help us get truer numbers so we can actually see. Is it my understanding the objective?
Mr. Wilson?
Uh, that is correct.
Okay.
And everything that's being asked, there are absolutely questions that need to be asked for more of these process. Um, and I think myself, Mr. Lane, I mean, that actually is going to cause us a staff overhaul and disruption. I mean, it's not going to be worth it to do more of this. I don't think we're going to recommend work for, but we have to get the true numbers.
You need the baseline. This is to get the baseline. Okay.
Mr. Brown?
Just to borrow from Alderman Woods' treadmill analysis, so this is really that you get on the treadmill, and they'll check your heart, they'll check your lungs, they'll check your, your, you know, blood flow and all that, and then determine which of those sources you need help on.
And they don't replace me every year.
Yeah, but.
There's something like that to happen.
They, they also take your wallet, too.
And then I'll get the information, then, that is necessary to bring back to the council so you know, okay, where do you want to invest, and where, where you're going to get a return on your investment for that, for that loss.
Okay, any other? Alderman Woods, go ahead.
Because they brought up some, Ellen threw some numbers out there, so I got another math question. So if I heard you correctly, the savings could be 13% or the, the loss is 13% of 17%?
87%.
Yeah, so, based on our reporting, the losses related to metering inaccuracies could be up to 13% of that 17% of our total water loss number.
From the meters, you're talking?
Correct.
13, could be 13% of the 17%.
Correct. So, but those figures are based on assumptions. It's, the, the rating system is not very accurate. It's not based on actual meter bench tests. It's based on, hey, we have a program where we proactively replace meters, we buy meters every so often, and that's what that measure of inaccuracy is based on. It's not based on us actually physically taking the meters out and testing them and see what they read.
I just wanted to point out that 13% of the 17%, the 2.21%?
Of 360 million gallons.
Yeah, so.
Now you're introducing whole numbers.
I've just, my purpose is to confuse you as much as possible, so I'm just going to keep talking until I succeed at all.
I'm, I'm, I'm good. I mean, I.
How come there's no amount on this? Wasn't it like 50,000 or something? But it wasn't in the resolution? Don't we have to have a not to exceed amount here?
Per homeowner, no. It's in the LOI, because if you want to add it, we're not going to complain if you add it.
Well, we know what the number is, so.
You can add, I mean, like, per those being.
I don't recall the exact number, I remember somewhere around 50,000.
It was exactly 50,000.
It was exactly.
We choose not to go with them, and we have to pay 50,000 if we choose to go with them, it's in the contract, right?
Mr. Wilson?
Yeah, if, if it's, if voters do not move the LOI, then we don't.
Anything. Now, if we approve it, we, we owe them the 50,000, whether we go forward with the meters or not.
Yeah, if they go through the data analysis.
Yes.
I always told.
Go ahead, Alderman Messina?
Sorry. I, my understanding is that the $50,000, if we went forward with the larger project based on the findings, would be applied towards balance.
Yeah, applied to the bill, right.
But if we did not move forward, sorry.
Then we owe them the 50,000. Okay, we need a motion. So resolution authorizing a letter of intent and approval to proceed with investment grade So resolution authorizing a letter of intent and approval to proceed with investment grade audit from Veragey for the advanced metering infrastructure leak detection project not to exceed fifty thousand?
I'll make the motion.
Do you have a second? Wait, didn't we have a motion? Yeah.
But we didn't have the money.
But if they could, if the motion or a second or accepts the...
Okay.
They just accept it.
Randy, are you okay with adding the not to exceed? An eighty?
Yep.
All right, roll call.
Alden Massina?
Yes.
Alden Woodman Ames?
Yes.
Alden Kellala? Alden Currielli?
Yes.
Alden Sisarski?
No.
Alden Headwoods?
No.
Alden Hardywes?
No.
Okay, that fails. All right. Good. Okay. Next. Other business, airport noise and stormwater, we're good right now. Approval list of bills, Alder Woman Ames?
I have two reports, Mayor. First is, I'd like to make a motion to approve the list of bills for September twenty-first, 2023, in the amount of seven hundred and eighty-eight thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars and eight cents.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any questions on these bills? Roll call.
Alden Woman Ames?
Yes.
Alden Hardywes?
Yes.
Alden Kellala?
Yes.
Alden Currielli?
Yes.
Alden Massina?
Yes.
Alden Sisarski?
Yes.
Alden Headwoods?
Yes.
That passes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the list of bills for October fifth, 2023, in the amount of one million, eight hundred and twenty-seven thousand, nine hundred and fifty-six dollars and seventy-six cents.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Questions on these? Roll call.
Alden Woman Ames?
Yes.
Alden Sisarski?
Yes.
Alden Kellala?
Yes.
Alden Currielli?
Yes.
Alden Massina?
Yes.
Alden Hardywes?
Yes.
Alden Hardywes?
Yes.
And that passes.
That concludes my report.
Thank you. We do have to recess into executive session for review of official minutes and land disposition. So we'll go back there and then we'll come right back out here. Motion to recess.
Second.
All in favor? Okay.
Is that like the five minutes, or is it going to...
Could be five minutes, could be an hour.
All right, that's all we need to know.
We, we never know with these things. We never know with these things.
Yeah. Yeah, um, six of the purposes of that was to be clear. So there's a special one to be made there.
Yeah.
That's probably the goal.
And how about the interesting?
Yeah.
I think you should do like a game down for some of the ones we didn't have. Because we have so many work hours. Obviously, like, um, when we do like the ones that are on, it's like, okay, so this sounds good. It's like, oh, oh, oh.
Yeah, I mean.
Should I just say?
Um, yeah. We don't, uh, we don't have a lot of, um, um, well, supposedly, you get that resource. Do it something that matches all that. You want to pay a lot of money for that, okay?
Yeah. I mean, I'm just trying to ask you, it's like, it's like, or, um, so, yeah. Well, last year was really, really awesome. Turned out here especially, and last year felt like, um, the concerts probably there. Concerts, yeah, they've been there, yeah.
Yeah, so, you know, so, oh, I totally agree.
You're sure?
Yeah, we did the performance.
Yeah. That's what we discussed.
Yes. This is really good, this is a solid, uh, or, we can do much, we can say, in Mexico. I'm sorry.
Okay.
Is there, oh, yes.
Yeah. I hope they're trying to, um, that would be the question, you know, sorry, but.
Yeah.
Wow.
So, you know, you know, so, but, still, I'm like, it's hard to do that. This, this is more, it's actually, yeah.
Right, it comes to me.
So, that's fine.
It's also, like, a clear, no, it would be, yes, yellow, perhaps, that would be, yes.
Right, yeah, so. You know, it's, you know, trying to be a session off of some of the others. And, um, just, um, maybe this, and, and, well, all the songs you can best first.
Is that?
Oh, we, we already, uh, so we just have to get some sense of the years, not well, um, probably, various, some of the questions. Our, our customers, um, the way in relation to, we're all, all, um, others.
Yeah, some consistency.
Just, you always need some, kind of, yeah.
No.
No, I think it's, yeah.
It'd be twelve or thirteen.
I'll plug it out in the past.
Whose is it?
I think it's Lynn's, isn't it?
Oh, maybe.
I got mine.
Holy smokes.
All my millions.
Don't forget the little piece.
Is, uh, Mary Kate still in there?
She is.
Yes, she is.
Yeah, we were constantly saying his partner.
Same members present? What time is it? I got my thing closed. Okay, I'd like to call the council meeting back to order at 8:27 PM. Let the minutes reflect, all members are still, same members are still present. Next, Alderman Catalano. Planning and zoning committee, go ahead.
Yes, I have one, resolution approving the agreement between the city of Wooddale and Colliers Bennett and Con Wiler LLC doing business as Colliers International Real Estate Exclusive Right to Sell Agreement. That is my motion.
Second. My motion is second, Rocco.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Ames?
Yes.
Alderman Currielli?
Yes.
Alderman Sismarski?
No.
Alderman Harwood's?
Yeah.
Yes.
Alderman Ardeals?
No.
Okay, that passes.
And that's the end of my report.
I need a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Alright. We're adjourned.